Good evening, everyone. If you joined us to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Rutland Select Board meeting for July the 9th. And myself, Mary, and John Paul will make up the board tonight with two of our other members absent. And we will get right to it. First, I wanted to thank Mary and compliment her. I heard you ran a heck of a meeting there last two weeks ago.
Heck of a meeting. I moved into your chair, Josh.
I saw it. I watched it on pig TV.
I bet you did.
Not too good. I looked for myself. She looks very good here to my left. Anyways, nice job, Mary.
Thank you.
All right, approval of the orders. We can't approve the 25th, right, Bill? But we can approve the 11th?
The 11th, yeah.
Approval of the minutes, I'm sorry. Have all board members seen the orders?
Yeah.
Oh, that was a hint, wasn't it?
Well, it's all right.
I'll move to approve the 11th.
Minutes of the 11th.
Second.
Motion by...
Must have been.
Yep. Motion by John Paul, second by Mary, for discussion. All those favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Far, but I'd hate to take that shirt back that I just gave you, too. Okay. So, we're gonna have to hold off on the 25th. Any questions from the floor? Public comment? Anyone who wishes to speak at this time? Howard, come on up. Howard Burgess, our head lister.
I'm not here to talk about the lister, but what I want to just discuss with you for a few minutes is to do with the Richard Del Balco Memorial Park Dewey Ball Field.
Sure.
Has a suggestion to do with parking, and I just want to throw that out in front of you. You know, the history of that ball field over there goes back to, you know, 1978 when they first renovated the whole thing. If you go over there, there's a plaque on the wall. It was a federal, state, local BOR project dated July 4th, 1978. And Don Chaffee was the chairman, and the members of the board were Jesse Bellings, Nancy Burgess, Carol D'Nardo, Paul Horton, Thomas Lord, and David Seward. And they did a great job getting this thing going, and the site work that had to be done over there was done by the Army Reserves off of North Main Street. Dave Zito was the commander of the unit. And the 45th Engineer Dump Truck Company, which I was involved with, we worked with, and we hauled a lot of sand from Mont Marvel pit in Proctor. That field was, if you're gonna see the picture of it, it wasn't much there. There were some big holes and everything. But anyways, they did a great job and made that field into everything that we could with the area that the town owned. And they couldn't go any further than that for parking because we didn't have the land. Now, we've got some extra land. Now, we have a situation where Stephen Dawson, who lives over in Maplewood Park, he's the company commander of the, I think it's the 424th Engineer Construction Company or something up at the Army on Post Road. And I talked with him. He would love to get involved in a project and come over here and put parking in. He drives by this every day. He knows what it is. You know, we got the problem with the no parking signs on the East Proctor Road. It might as well be parking signs because that's where everybody parks. But in order to really get in there and do something, you need, you gotta have some earthmoving equipment that can go in there and do something. And my suggestion would be to contact him, send a letter, contact, find out who to send a letter to. And he suggested this, send a letter from the board. And he thinks that they would take that project on. They may not start for a year, but they would come and plan it and engineer it, and they've got the tools and the equipment to go up there and move some stuff around. I know that there's probably ledge rocks or whatever, but you don't get this opportunity very often to get...
For it to come around twice for that park is pretty special.
Absolutely. And you know, they didn't really get any recognition for the first time. The town put a plaque up for everything everybody else did, but it was brought to my attention, and I talked with Dave Zito about this, and Stephen, and they both said, you know, really got any, didn't get any recognition for what we did, but they did a heck of a job. I mean, turned that field into what it is today.
We won't make that same mistake twice if they help us out.
Very good. But, I mean, it may not go anyplace, but it wouldn't cost anything to write them a letter and try to get them involved, and maybe we could finally get some parking so we could really clear off the East Proctor Road once for all. We were doing it now as a Band-Aid approach, and we're not gonna ever get there, I don't think.
So... Have you talked to Mike Rowan all about this?
No, I haven't. No, I just, it all happened in the last week when I talked to Steve. I saw, I just happened to bump into Dave Zito over the weekend and chatted about it, and I said, I guess we better get something going. No, I haven't seen Mike even talk to him.
Because they did, of course, create more parking over there.
It's...
There is more parking over there, and we had actually talked about the no parking area outside on the East Pittsburgh Road. And now that we have the parking in back starting to enforce it.
They still didn't do it, though.
No. And with the Army Corps of Engineers, they can get down to that property. It's too expensive for us to access, to access. You know what I'm saying? Where it falls off, they might be able to really blow that up and give us a lot more parking.
They've got the equipment.
Right.
They're a big outfit.
They are.
And Captain Dawson said he would love to do it. He would love to do it. And you never get a better opportunity than this, and he may not be there for, you know, he won't be there forever. So now, now's the time. You got somebody with a foot in the drawer here to go to back for us, and they're in Rutland Town.
Sure.
That's my suggestion. I just wanted to bring that up.
So, could you attend a recreation meeting if we set it up in the next couple of days and we get this down and get it moving forward?
Okay.
Could you?
Yep.
Share that information with Mike and myself and the other member of the...
Sure. And I can, sure. And then we could...
Then we can make a recommendation to the full board.
Yep.
All right.
I think that would be, just at least consider it and try to get something.
That's great, Howard. Thanks for bringing it in.
Very positive. Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Howard.
Thank you.
I'd like to go to you folks next. Windcrest Road, right?
Yeah.
Come on up, if you would. You just would state your name and your address for us.
Hi, my name's Dan Barker, and this is my wife Nancy.
Hi.
We live on 179 Windcrest Road. And we're acquiring about years ago before the mall was built, there was a 50-foot right away between our house and the first house, so that before the mall was built, you could access that field. Now that the mall's there, it's more or less a dead piece of property. We're interested in purchasing it if possible.
So, you own the second house on the left as you go up Windcrest?
Right.
And Alderman's...
Alderman's just bought the first house.
Recently purchased the first house.
Yes.
Yep. And so, the right away, you're interested in the town selling to you folks?
Yes. So, we can keep it as a buffer because we've been told that he's gonna tear it down and start using it to park his cars there. If he should purchase that piece of property, that right away, now his parking lot's gonna be right up against the back of my house.
And I have...
What if the town didn't sell it to anybody?
Anyone, and then it would stay a buffer.
Yeah, that would be...
You know? That would be great, too. I'm just trying to kind of protect our property.
Right.
Because I really don't want all the car lot right up against my garage.
And the town feels the same way about protecting its right aways as well. So, it's something that, you know, typically you wouldn't sell a right away like that. You wouldn't sell something where we might...
Even something that's not...
I thought it was like a fee simple.
It's like a dead piece of property because you can't access the mall anymore.
So, you never know when it's gonna come back.
Right.
And you're gonna need it, which is why you probably, as a town, we probably couldn't let it go to begin with.
Okay. Yeah, we're down here just trying to gather information to try and protect ourselves.
We don't wanna look at our backyard and see the cars.
But the good news for you folks is we're not in the business of selling it, so you're not gonna have to worry about the cars being parked on it.
Okay. You know, like I said, we acquired, you know, years ago, and they said, you know...
What is it, 50-foot right away?
50 by 200 feet.
50 feet wide, so the cars are gonna be pretty far.
How long is it? Do you know how long it is?
About 200 feet.
200 feet.
Yeah, I don't know if you wanna look at these old maps.
Those are the old maps of it. The second one I highlighted, your actual strip.
And Pratt was Mrs. Myers.
Who we bought the house from.
Previous name, who we bought it from.
With the water issue.
Yeah, Mr. Myers.
Right, right.
Things about it.
And, you know, we've been keeping it up because we don't want it to go back to jungle. You know, so I've been mowing it first.
How many years have you folks lived in that house?
Since '02.
'02. We've been there 17 years.
The house that Alderman's bought, my father and stepmom...
Yes.
...lived there for a while.
Yes.
Yep. Nice backyard.
Yep.
Plenty of room for cars.
And everyone thinks it's all of ours.
Yeah.
The way we maintain.
Right. You know, and like I said, I just would like, you know, you keep it as the buffer, your right away, or if there is an opportunity, you guys decide to...
To sell.
You do wanna sell it, I would like, you know, first offers on it.
Well, we'll make a note of it, and...
So, we can keep it as that buffer.
Do you have any comment on that?
That's not an unreasonable request either.
We'd be happy to have it surveyed and appraised if you needed us to do that.
Well, if it's set out, I'm sure there's already a survey of it.
Well, and that's another issue, because when we bought the house, we were told that there was possibly some issues with some of the pins.
Okay.
So, we've never surveyed it. So, I went by what the measurements are there, and Alderman's just had it surveyed, and their survey marks don't line up with what's on those maps. So...
The gravel drive is, I think, partly on the right away.
On the right away. That's the way I measured it.
Yep.
You know, but he had a surveyor up there, and that's more into your right away than where I figure it's supposed to be by almost 20 feet. You know, so like I said, we're just trying to protect ourselves from having the car lot against my house.
Sure.
We're in the backyard. It looks like it shouldn't be long there.
So, Byron, it looks like a 50-foot, not easement, but deeded right of way, deeded property, piece of property. Do you, do you know? Did our map...
Check it. I don't know. I'm sure it's deeded, or if it's... But I can check in the rest tomorrow.
Yeah, I'm not sure it makes much difference unless the town releases it, and I'm assuming we have it as part of our road network. We get state aid on it?
No. You see, you got nothing on it, you know, so if...
Okay.
If you guys ever do decide to sell it to us, then you get tax revenue off of it. You know, right now, you're getting nothing off of it.
Good argument.
And, you know, then I can add on to my garage because I can't do it now because of the property line, so it's a win-win for the town, you know?
Get something for it, and something every year.
And I can understand and appreciate that argument. We're not really in the business of selling land.
Right.
We tend to acquire more than we sell, but...
Right.
We'll, we'll take a note of it, and if something comes up in the future and we decide to change our minds, you'll be the first to know about it.
Okay.
Okay.
All right? In the meantime, if you think that, you know, there's too much impeachment on, towards you, let us know.
That's the way I see it right now.
And we can try and take a peek.
You know, because like I said, I had measured it a couple of years ago from the pin that I think is right, going towards Alderman's, and it put the 50 feet is like right inches from his mailbox. Well, they just surveyed it, and it's 25 feet...
There's a little orange mark on the paper.
Difference that I'm measuring.
Byron, is that something you could look at?
Sure.
All right, thanks.
And I'm there every day, Byron, so I can show you exactly where I think my correct pin is. And, you know, you could judge for yourself. And here, again, I'm not trying to start a war. I'm just trying to protect myself, you know, because I can see the car lot now. I don't want it out my window.
Understood.
Good.
Thanks for coming in.
Yep. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate your time. Absolutely. Any further questions, public comment from the floor? Yes.
You.
You.
Fireworks?
Yes. You wanna talk about it?
They're discussing it, yeah.
We can discuss it now.
Do you?
Yeah. I wanted to hear, I wanted to hear what you had to say about it. It's important for the board to hear.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Come on up.
Okay.
Tell us your name and where you live.
I'm Jane de Blasio.
Hi, Jane.
358 Hitzel Terrace. And I just wondered if there was some way we could find out where the fireworks permits have been granted to be set off.
Understood. So, Jane and I have been in fairly regular communications around...
You can say too much if you want to.
I didn't say too much.
(laughing)
I'm happy to help. And we're right around the corner from each other, and fireworks have been relatively prevalent in our neighborhood over the last few weeks, I'd say. And Jane has good to message me about it. So, the Town of Clarndon, and one of the fire chief and police chiefs input here, too. The Town of Clarndon has been posting the fireworks permits that their fire chief has been issuing to their town's Facebook page. And so, Jane and others that I spoke to actually at the town celebration on Saturday asked if there's a way that we could make our permits public. So, I wanted to see, Chief Clark, is there any reason why you thought that we couldn't do that, or is there...
I don't see any reason. They're on record here.
Okay, so that's something that Bill could, could put on our Facebook page and website? Yeah. Okay. Chief, do miss anything? I also would like to ask the board if we could send to the police committee for them to investigate a little bit with the police chief, how many fireworks complaints we've received this year between us and the local PD and the state police. Because I have, I've received a number of them, and not just Jane, but others. And the town celebration, there was, I can, I can think of three different people that said something to me about fireworks in the town. And so, not that, you know, not that I'm gonna raise any red flags or cause any commotion, but I do wanna see if we can investigate this a little bit and see what, if we've seen an uptick this year versus years past, and if we're, you know, getting the message out there enough that fireworks permits are needed, and it's 15 days from the day you get that permit issued is when you can fire them off. So, does the board think that's a worthy cause of our committee?
Can I say something?
Sure, Chief.
So, as for the select board memo that the Motley C's towns put out in reference to fireworks, and where we came from as a country and whatnot, and that, I guess, the thing I got out of it is I guess we're all a little bit rebellious, and we put up with it this time of year because of our roots. It's a way that people use to celebrate the 4th of July. Some do it before, some do it after, but usually this time of year, we do have these fireworks complaints. If there's a real big problem, and it's every day, you know, yeah, I would step in and talk to people and try to get things calmed down and say, enough's enough. Permanent process is the way it goes. We still continue to educate, okay, we need to give them permanent assistance, there's no problems. And I'm all for that. But it is America, and it is the 4th of July, and I understand it's a pain, but by the end, by the end of July, first product, the fireworks usually all burn out. You don't have this problem.
So, you don't feel we've had an uptick in complaints to the PD?
I have. I can check the state police logs if they even would send a trooper to check on them. They look at it as more of a quality of life issue.
Yeah.
Police log. And I understand the state has allowed the towns to regulate the fireworks and to put some sort of, mainly for fire reasons, I think, if there's, if there's a fire issue. I've had a conversation with the fire chief that if he gets a complaint, if something happens, and people are touching on fireworks over a building, or something's dangerous, I have his back. I'll instantly, we're down there, we'll take care of the problem. If it's a quality of life issue, it's every night, same people. Yeah, we go along with it, stop. I'm also...
And I think that's the problem, is it's not the same people.
It's different.
It's different people. Last, starting last summer, we definitely noticed an increase in it happening. It was enormous change. And I think just people are, you know, going up to the store and buying it, and going home and setting them off. Now, I wondered, is everything in that store, is it strong enough or big enough, whatever, that they have to get a permit no matter what they buy there, or is there just certain products?
There's a certain class of fireworks, like, I can't remember what it is, I don't know, it's class three or something like that.
Right.
There's, up to a certain point, anybody can buy them, and after that, you have to be a licensed person to handle it.
Right. So, do you think there's, they're selling stuff there that doesn't need a permit, and some does? So, it's up to the...
I don't know.
Or...
Our, our understanding when we investigated this a couple of years ago was basically anything besides a sparkler, which you can buy in a grocery store, requires a permit.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, that was one of our questions. Hard telling if he's selling stuff that should be only used for commercial use. I'd find it hard to believe.
Yeah.
Because, you know, he has done a nice job in terms of putting the message out there that you need a permit from your local town. He has signs at his facility that you have to be 21 or older to buy fireworks versus the state law says 18. So, he has, you know, risen the age of maturity to sell them to, so I still believe he's trying everything he can to...
What do you mean, though, by that? He's done a nice job.
Well, when you go to the facility, there's signs and posters that say, you know...
I went and looked, and I thought it looked like stuff that you would never stop and look at. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I mean, he's got, so what I'm trying to say is, he didn't have to do any of that. He's going above and beyond what he had to do to try to educate the consumer that you need these permits to fire them off. So...
So, he really doesn't have to let someone know?
And some people are not probably going to file permits because...
I think most don't.
I went, we, friends of ours, she bought stuff there and brought them home and let them off on the 4th, the 3rd of July, and I don't believe she had gotten a permit.
And the 4th of July is different.
In following you to get a permit is one thing. You following through, getting the permit is another thing.
Yes, yes, right. And the 4th of July isn't, you know, I love fireworks myself, but my issue is my dog. But the, the 4th of July, I understand it, and even the way it fell on a Thursday, I expected, I expected it Friday and Saturday. I really did. And we can pre-medicate our dog. It makes all the difference. It's when they happen suddenly with no, you know, no notice is what I'm most concerned about, is all of a sudden, you know, you get this, these huge horrible noises that that's the issue. And I just think the prevalence with the store, it's just happening. It's happening more and more. And I didn't realize that he doesn't have any obligation at all to tell someone that they need a permit. That's...
But he, but he has the sign there that says you need a permit.
Right. But I mean, if he doesn't have an obligation to sell, to tell anyone, then of course he's not gonna tell anyone. Because, you know, like if I was having a party, like a bunch of people stopped, "Let's go have some, let's go get some fireworks." I mean, you're, you're gonna be deterred immediately if the guy selling them to you says, "Oh, you need to get a permit. You can't use these for 15 days." So, he's gonna lose the sale. So, by, like, it just feels like there's something wrong if he can sell them and make his money. And then these people are probably gonna go, and I know it's not a big law or a big deal, but they are gonna go do something illegal. I think the laws, I think we've talked about it, they're kinda backwards. It's legal to sell them, but it's illegal to set them off without a permit. So, I just wish there was a good answer, and I don't know what it is. And I hate calling the police.
Well, I think a first step is to get them posted on the Facebook page and website. That's gonna be our, that'll be our first step, right, Bill?
That will help a lot. Yeah.
So, and Chief Clark, how many of these permits have you, would you say you've issued so far this year?
I think I've got seven, and I've had one complaint.
So, we know that more than seven people have been setting off fireworks in town this summer.
Has it been seven till now, or for the future, too?
Uh, till now.
Oh, really? Okay. And do you have any, like, are pending right now?
No.
Oh, that's good.
Maybe.
Yeah, maybe.
How, how long is the permit good for? One day?
So, is it a one-day permit, Chief?
It is. They write the dates. We're gonna wire them off, and that's the day they...
You have to specify where, because I, you know, went and looked at them and read it. You have to say where it is, the time, and the date, and I think even, like, who's doing it, right?
Yeah.
Who's sending them off?
Whoever's...
You guys have to approve it.
Yeah.
Yeah. So...
So, my recommendation was to have the police committee, a police committee look at complaints, but it doesn't sound like, Chief, you think there's a need for that?
I can check the state. I can check CAD and see how many complaints we got to town.
I haven't called this year, but last year, I called the city police all the time. Because, see, I live close enough to the city that I thought that's where they were coming from.
So, you give us an update in two weeks, Chief?
Okay.
Anything else for you, Chief Clark?
Okay.
Jane, thank you.
Okay.
Good to see you.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Any further questions on the floor, public comment? Bill Sweet, Town Administration Assistant to the Select Board. How are you, Bill?
I'm good. How are you?
Great.[1544.62]
So, we'll go through the packet items first. Uh, so, uh, from a couple meetings ago, um, Velco had talked about doing their solar project, uh, and needing, uh, a letter from us, uh, supporting them being within their buffer zone. Uh, so one of the things we asked from them was a letter of intent, and they have delivered on that. Uh, so, they are, they are indeed doing it, and I've been in contact with, uh, with a couple people from there, and, uh, so that is real of that, so they're, they are moving forward with that. Uh, let's see. Uh, we also talked about, uh, the request from Alderman's for the abatement, and they needed, they needed a reply, so number four is the reply that was sent to them, uh, and they have since made their formal request and are having their hearing coming up soon.
Yeah, just to be clear, it's not this board that hears abatement requests, it has to go to the board of civil authority.
Yes. So they are on their agenda for next week.
What time is that next week, Kirsten? Six feet.
Uh, number five is, uh, part of the agenda right now, uh, that we carried over from a, a previous meeting. It's, uh, the, it's Kevin Brown's, uh, Kevin Brown's comments on, uh, the Stormwater Ordinance and his changes to it.
We'll take that up a little later.
Okay. Uh, number six is a letter we received from Aral High School in regards to the scholarships that were handed out there.
That's great.
It's recognition from them.
We got a couple, a couple cards from some town students, right?
Yep. Yes, we did. Uh, number seven is also under Old Business, uh, that's the updated, uh, RFP for the work in Kirsten's office.
Did all board members review this?
So I had just a couple of suggestions on that. On item 1B, I, I think that should read that, uh, at the end of it should be, "Refinish if feasible." I don't understand what the word "applicable" meant. I think we're trying to determine whether it's feasible to do that.
Okay.
And I think the same would be true for item 3A. Access existing tin ceiling to determine feasibility of refinishing, or, yeah, refinishing. Other than that, I, I was good with it.
Marion?
Well, I continue to oppose the idea of the glass enclosure.
I didn't see a glass enclosure in here, is it still in here? Oh, was it number eight?
Yeah, framing a glass slider on top of the counter. And if you look at number eight, and then you go to interior construction, demo doorway and small wall section. If you do num-, if 6B, then you have to do some other kind of enclosure.
Gotcha.
So, you know, I'm, so I'm opposed to the glass counter, therefore I would be opposed to demoing the doorway to create an opening that can't then be secured except by the glass enclosure.
So if it was voted on tonight, the way it says, Mary, would, is it fair to assume you would be a no vote on this?
That would be correct.
So, for a lack of, uh, positive, um, motion on this, we're going to have to table it for another two weeks for a full board. See if there's a majority who support the glass or not. Okay? Bill, or, uh, Bill, can you put on the packets for another two weeks?
Yep. Uh, number eights from Byron, two and three are from Byron, uh, number eights from Byron. Uh, number nine, uh, is a quote we received, uh, after, uh, contacted Efficiency Vermont and, and Green Mountain Power, and they gave me some, uh, local contractors, uh, and, uh, Bill Lowson was one of them, uh, he came within about 48 hours of, of calling, uh, and gave us pricing on it. So, um, since he was here, uh, I got the rebate information. So Efficiency Vermont said they had some money, some funds available, and Green Mountain Power said they had some funds available. So, uh, his total price for all the units, so that's two units here, uh, one for McKinley Avenue Fire Station Office and one for the transfer station office, uh, the total price, uh, labor, materials, everything, uh, was 13,355. That included the Efficiency Vermont rebates that were available. Uh, Efficiency Vermont, uh, is willing to give us an additional $4,200 toward that project, and Green Mountain Power would contribute an additional $1,200 toward the project. Uh, so it'd be 7,755 for four units installed.
How much would it be out of our pocket?
7,755.
So, question for you, um, why would we put a, a heat pump in a fire station we're going to tear down soon?
Uh, well, we discussed that, I discussed it with Green Mountain Power, Efficiency Vermont, and Bill, and he said it would be easily movable to a future building.
But if we didn't pay for it now, what would our 7,755 go to?
Uh, it would be, be reduced, uh, it was $400 per unit from, or $400 per condenser from Green Mountain Power, so that, there's, there's a go from 12 to 800. Uh, Efficiency Vermont didn't give me a breakdown by building, but I would imagine it'd be a similar ratio, so probably about $1,400 from them, so we'd lose about $1,800 in the, uh, project. That's about, about half of the cost for that, for that building.
Yeah, so I would, I would support doing the heat pumps less than McKinley Avenue Fire Station, I'd even, we're going to want a brand-new one for a brand-new fire station, we're not going to want to start taking stuff out of McKinley Avenue and putting it in a new building. Chief?
Uh, I agree, because, uh, those things are sized on the room size.
Yeah, okay.
Thoughts on that, John Paul or Mary?
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with taking McKinley off. Um, question, is Bill Lowson a preferred vendor?
No.
We'd have to put...
We didn't, we didn't have any, we, the one we have doesn't, doesn't do this.
Okay.
And these units, uh, he was, and he was one of the few that, that installed the same ones as we have here, so they'd all be the same units. Uh, the other, only other ones were in northern Vermont that did that, did this unit.
So if you take off the McKinley unit, does it fall below...
Five grand.
Five grand.
Uh...
The rebates would fall too.
The rebates would, yeah, so we, we would lose, I figure about, about $1,800 off that. Uh, so, we're getting...
$1,800 off of that, six grand?
Yeah. No, 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 you have to increase 7,750, you have to increase 7,755 plus that, so, uh, we'd be looking at, uh, 14, $1,800, 9,500 between here and the transfer station.
Wait a second. It's going to cost us more to do less?
No, no. It's 7,755.
Lost here.
It's, 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 thir-, thir-, his, his price for the three buildings is 13,355.
Right.
If we did all three buildings, we'd get $5,400 in rebates with a final price of 7,755.
Okay.
But if we take out those buildings, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't know what would ca-, I gotta go back and, oh, I, I, I don't, I don't have a calculator in front of me, so...
So, is it a, is a decision we need to make tonight? We don't lose out on rebates, wait two weeks?
Uh, Efficiency Vermont, we have to have it done by the end of the year for them to be able to do that, so they are the, they are the only time constraint.
And here's a question for the rest of the board, and that is, I mean, even, even if we're under 5,000, that means we don't need a formal bid process, but we do need to solicit...
Three quotes?
I think it's prefer-, at least two, preferably three. Unless there's a preferred vendor, which there is not, so. So we need at least one more quote.
Okay, I'll see.
So a little more work on that, Billy?
Yeah.
Do we want, do we want to use the same, I mean, I can get other people, but they're not going to be the same units. So, I don't know if that, if there's a preference for that, I figured we would stick with the same ones for serviceability, it'd be easier to call one person that can work on them rather than multiple ones, but that's, there's, there's other vendors that'll do other ones, certainly, so...
But is Lowson, he has the rights to that certain type of unit?
No, but he, he was one, he was, I'm, I'm, one of the local ones that did this model. There's other, there's plenty of models of heat pumps, but he was the only, he was, um, only one close that did, uh, did the same units as we already, already have. So, I can certainly call the ones and see what they have recommendations.
All right.
Hmm? Uh, let's see, that's all for me from what's, uh, in your packet. Uh, on your desk, uh, you have, uh, the calls for service from, uh, Chief Dumas, uh, some education tax rate information from Kirsten, uh, and then, uh, we got the, and, uh, invoice from the Royal Regional Chamber of Commerce. Did you want to go over that, Josh, or?
Yeah, I, I do, and I would like, uh, if the board's okay with it, I'd like you to find out a little more information as to what we paid last year, and maybe, maybe a visit from Mary is due to, to tell the good people around town what we get for this $1,400. Because that seems high to me compared to years past, is it to the rest of the board?
I don't remember what we've been paid.
Because we've all, we also participate in our $4,200 of marketing money.
Is it a, it's not an appropriation, is it?
No, this is, I think this is just our dues.
All right, and I went looking for my town report.
Membership investment renewal.
Kirsten, you know where this comes out of?
Uh, marketing, um, I don't have mine. Oh, I believe we have a Yonator in there.
For this $1,400?
Yeah.
Do we pay dues to the Regional Commission, Barbara?
They might not be listed in here, I think we put it with the appropriations. So we, do we, do we put it with the appropriations, then?
You find that for us for next meeting? Bill, would you, uh, ask Mary for a little more detail?
Yep.
All right, that sounds more like it. Okay, little work to be done on that. Let's go for a spill.
Uh, you also have, uh, the, um, the committee agenda items, uh, they sent out, so we have a pretty healthy list, and I just added the topic for, for rec onto there. Uh, so, there's nothing that's really very time-sensitive, but the list is growing.
We passed a conflict of interest last, last meeting?
We did, yes.
Yes, we did.
So we met the July deadline?
We did, that, that's, that, that, and that's, that's been taken off the list, so I think it took off the list. Uh, but there's a few things that have, that have just keep, that've come up over time, so, um, but I know Kirsten needs a finance committee meeting for the tax rate and some other things that are, you know, pretty close on the, on the horizon.
Where's Andrew with the audit?
Uh, we've started, I just started signing papers for them to come in and have the ability to look through all of our paperwork and all that kind of stuff. Um, they have been in already to do some preliminary audit, um, report work, so...
Could, next, next Tuesday at 5 o'clock before the BCA, could you do a finance committee meeting? It's you and I.
Sure.
Great.
Tuesday at 5?
Yeah. All right, we'll talk about that, then, Kirsten.
How much of this do you want on your agenda?
How much do you have for finance?
Uh, it's the biggest portion of the list.
Put it on there?
Uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 10 items, well...
10 items?
Yeah.
10 minutes a piece is an hour.
10 items, 10 minutes a piece is an hour?
Please, on finance?
Yeah. Pretty sure it's not, but okay.
Fine.
Uh, so...
Whatever it is, put it on there, Bill.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll pull up the, there's some, there's, because there's some personnel stuff and there's some finance, because personnel and finance you put together, so...
I like that.
Um, more of this is personnel than finance, but some of this you're going to need me for, and you're not going to get me, so, um, so we'll, we'll move that stuff off for, for another time.
All right.
Uh, okay. Uh, but keep, keep that in mind, because we do need to get some things, uh, crossed off here. Uh, Kirsten and I are going to West Rutland tomorrow morning for the, uh, our parcel appraisal. Grievance hearing is tomorrow, uh, we have two appointments because there's two parcels. Uh, we may have figured out what the issue is, so we'll, we'll, we'll see, uh, we have a couple years of property tax bills to bring with us for, for backup. Um, and, uh, we received, uh, several, uh, messages and some interest in the, uh, police car out front, uh, for sale. We do have one written offer, uh, our asking price was 2,900, and we have a written offer for 2,500, and that's the only formal offer we received.
Move to approve?
Motion to approve by John, seconded by Mary.
I, I gotta tell you, seeing the car out there makes it, I, I just want to get rid of it, used car lot ish.
We have had several people slow down going by the...
It's amazing, it was very effective.
Yeah. It's ugly.
Yeah.
I know, I know.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
Okay. That'll make them very happy. Uh, and...
Is that one of yours now, JP?
Pardon?
Did you buy that?
No. Uh, I, I could show you, I could show you who it is, but, um, and then, uh, very much I will be on vacation, um, starting Friday, and then all of next week, so Josh has said he will hang out here a little while next week to do what he can to cover.
That's right.
Yep.
Uh, make sure you, you know, do the title and the bill of sale with those people, and "as is, no warranty, as is..."
My, my, my attorney sitting next to me here is going to help me with that, with that process, because I'm, we'll, we'll probably, we're going to do it next week.
No returns, no, right?
Do it next week.
All right.
Okay, that's, uh, the, the new server is, uh, going in as, as we speak, it's, it's, it's migrating data, so we're, we're, we're moving right along, so...
Okay, uh, while you're there, Mike Rowe is absent, but under New Business Letter B Board to recap the recent townwide celebration, I wanted to first thank everyone who participated, from department heads to employees, to volunteers, uh, to the board, to everyone else. We had a lot of, uh, donations this year from, uh, Jump for Fun, from Mark Foley's Happy Cows, uh, from whom am I missing? We had the Sheriff's Department come, we had regional ambulance come, the Fire Department and Police, of course.
Brad from Efficiency Vermont was there, and he actually said we...
Byron with his wagon.
Byron, Hathaway Farms, thank you, Byron.
And his advice on cooking hamburgers, which, who would have known, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and Kamut's Market, they give us such a great deal.
Yep. I did put a, a pretty substantial post on Facebook this morning, and I, and I got everybody that I, that I could...
Killington Fire Department for the use of the grills, the, the Fire Academy for the trailer, right?
Keys to Energy, Keys to Energy.
I had a phone call from a town resident, he said that they had a wonderful time.
Yeah, I've had a couple, actually, yeah.
Put it on, and, so, they thanked us for it.
So I'd ask, so I can keep a file on it for, so we can learn from, you know, our opportunities and celebrate what we did well. I'd love some email recaps from anyone who was involved to give me their thoughts, and I'll keep it, and then, uh, the, the one suggestion that Mike and I did talk about was, um, doing it the Saturday before the 4th of July next year, because he felt like a lot of families were out of town for vacation, and so to do it the week before the 4th, rather than the, the weekend after, would make a lot of sense. So we want to make sure we keep that note, but, uh, we get the better part of the day, as John Paul said, and...
Yeah, we did.
The sky's open. We are, for those who are looking forward to Rick Reddington's band coming, we are going to still do that, uh, one night in August at the pool.
Yep.
So we haven't picked a date yet, right?
Right, so I, I talked, I, I talked with him that day, they were actually heading to the pool, and we, we, we all, this guy decided that was probably not the, not going to work, so, uh, he's more than happy, he says it gives everybody time to kind of promote that too, so, and I talked to Mike, uh, and, so we'll, because he canceled the movie also, because they couldn't get the pool back open, so we thought we'd do, uh, the concert and movie night again, and, and do, uh, do that toward the end of the summer, and we'll, uh, we'll pick it, we gotta pick a date and then start promoting that, so...
Kirsten?
I did have one suggestion that I thought about, and I texted Bill about it, is that next year, it seems like we keep having issues with thunderstorms, um, for our 4th of July extravaganza, and I was wondering if we might want to consider doing it at the end of the summer as like a closing pool kickoff kind of thing to the fall, and, because there's a lot less thunderstorms in August typically.
Uh, um, yeah, I mean, it's certainly a suggestion we could look at as a committee, so...
Yep.
I'm not opposed to any. Byron?
Just, as a thought for next year, um, I don't know who came up with the idea of having everything down there in the lower parking lot. Um, I had reservations when I first saw that and got there, I thought it was excellent, I thought that was a great idea, uh, it kept everybody together, and not that great. It did kind of take away from the wagon rides, which I'm not complaining about, because typically when we had it spread out amongst the park, people got on and got off, got on and got off, so essentially the wagon ride was just a ride down to the back of the parking path again. So I was just wondering, just putting it back in mind, maybe not have the wagon ride, if you're going to continue with that, but instead bring some, a couple of bigger pieces of the highway equipment up, and let the kids find mine and get pictures.
Yeah. Well, we could do that as well.
By having, can I speak?
Sure, you, absolutely.
Am I allowed?
Just hope we like the...
Okay, I wanted to whoosh. But having everything down there, it did take away from parking, so how was, because I was, I was there early, so I didn't know how the parking went throughout the day. I figured Byron would be there to shuttle people from the upper parking lot down, how did that all work?
I don't think there was any shuttling, was there, Byron?
No, there wasn't any shuttling, there was one car that I think that parked down the upper parking lot.
Where did everybody park?
I think, uh...
A lot of it was coming, traffic that was just coming and going, people were parking, spending a few minutes' time, sat there, ate burger or whatever, and then left.
But where did they park?
Same place they do for the, for the 4th of July, up, up above, yeah, but, but, yeah, Botan Squart and up by the, uh, off to the right of the transfer stations that are parking.
So they, they didn't, uh, park along the road there going down?
Nope.
So there wasn't a problem there?
Nope.
Because I figured you were there to shuttle people that, you know, they would be parking in the upper field, come down.
So the, the, that was kind of my idea, was to close out the bottom parking lot, and I did that because last year when we had stuff all over the place, some people didn't see things or didn't get to things, so, and we had a, especially with Mark Foley, with the, uh, ice cream truck, there was a lot of people walking around, and there was a lot of traffic driving around, so I'm like, well, it might not be such an awesome thing, so we decided, let's just limit the traffic, and then people can walk around, and that worked out well to open up displays and stuff like that, so it just gave people a place to walk around, not have to worry about traffic, so...
Uh, that being said, Kirsten, for the next meeting, could you get us a, a balance of how much we have left in the, uh, Celebration Committee Fund?
I was going to ask if we were doing a donation.
I'd, I'd like to propose we do another one this year to the Foley Cancer Center in honor of Mark.
That was wonderful.
We've done 250 in the past, so...
Yeah.
I'd like to continue on that tradition if the board supports it.
I, I think there's, yeah.
There should be plenty.
Yeah, just, I mean...
Well, yeah, this budget, we just got into the new budget here.
Yeah, so, knowing what we spent, I mean, we spent half of it on food. Yeah, so, knowing what we spent, I mean, we spent half of it on food.
Right.
And a lot less happened on food, and.
So Mary made the motion, is there a second?
I did.
John Paul's second. The motion is to donate $250 to the Foley Cancer Center, the Royal Regional Medical Center, as a thank you to Mark once again this year for the donation of the ice cream from his Happy Cows ice cream business.
From the celebration funds.
From the celebration fund. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion passes. Thanks. Great, great job, and then if you see Mike Rowe, he's not here tonight, if you noticed, he is celebrating his 25th wedding anniversary tonight, so, he told me he was gonna choose his wife over us tonight, so.
Like he had a choice.
So, big one. Okay, anything else Bill?
That's all I have.
Alright, great. Thanks.
Enjoy your vacation.
Thank you.
Yes. Uh, Barbara Noisepulling, Town Planning Commission Chair.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Bye bye.
How are you?
Good, good.
What do you have for us? Maps?
We've got a public meeting Thursday night on the stormwater ordinance, starts at 6 right here.
Are any of you gonna, you gonna be there?
I'm gonna try and be here.
I'm gonna be out of, out of town Barbara.
Either that or the Rutland County Democratic Committee, what do you think Josh?
Well, I don't know, he's.
Putting you on the spot.
Yeah.
So is there, are, the changes that Kevin Brown has been suggesting, are they very major?
Yes.
Is it, is it something that we should know about for the public meeting?
He wants to delete paragraph 7.7, and I agree it should be deleted. Not paragraph, not the whole paragraph, but the 48 hours notice.
Oh, the 48 hours notice, yeah.
48 hours.
That's gotta come out.
I'm gonna put that in a form of motion John.
Sure.
Second.
Seconded by Mary. So the motion is to take out of the, uh, proposed stormwater ordinance, the 7.7, the 48 hour advance written notice requirement.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
And that was it?
That's it.
That's it.
So do we need to do anything else with the other changes, or have we already approved those? I, and it was the, the criminal, the civil division, that's one.
Kevin seems to be okay with what we've done.
Okay. So that was the only one where we had to make a decision?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the way I interpret it, yep. Did you get a copy of, of Kevin's letter? Well, why don't you take mine, so you can discuss it with the board?
Okay, thank you.
He's basically talking about, we, we might have to go down there on a moment's notice if there's an emergency or a flooding, and we can't be given 48 hours notice if we've gotta get right to it.
Right. Okay.
What, what else you have first Barbara?
Um, something that's coming down the pike, and I don't know if Byron or Bill were planning on talking to you about this at some point, but the hazard mitigation plan, the state has reviewed it and has a couple of comments, um, so, nothing has to be done right away, but Stephanie, I work with Stephanie, she just alerted me, um, that there are, I think there were, uh, four, five, five comments made.
Is this the one where we didn't approve? We looked at it, we sent it to them, and then the state has to make the changes and then we approve it, or is that something else I'm thinking of?
I think it's something else.
Okay.
It is right. It's a convoluted process, but.
Could you get that to Bill, so he can put it in our next packet?
Yes, I think he does have a copy, and you have a copy.
This goes to the state, they give some comments, she fixed it, sent it back, they approve it, it goes to FEMA.
Oh.
They do their review process, send it back to us, and then we adopt it.
Okay.
I'd like to see the state comments though, while they're fresh, please, thanks.
You've got a copy, right Bill?
Yep.
Just put it in the packet for next week, please. Or two weeks.
Just, I'll be building, I'll be building the packet, so.
Take good notes.
Yeah. Your packets can be very thin for next meeting, because I'll be building it. So.
Well, that's right.
Yeah.
That's just because the record's going tonight, is that what that is?
What else Barbara?
That's it, that's all I have.
I do.
Okay, let's see it Mary.
Okay, so, um, Pocket Park.
Yes.
Um, Mark Youngstrom had done a, uh, design, but then he said what you really need to do is pass the map with, with his sketch, his sketch on it, to various groups in town to mark it up with crayons or whatever, to add other, this is not the final design by any means, we're just early in the stage, so I thought I would leave a copy here, so the select board could mark it up, and here's one for the planning commission.
Oh, what?
You can do your thing too.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We'll hang that on the chalkboard Mary?
I think we can do that.
Alright.
And if there's any other group who wants to take a look at it, like REC maybe, for example, I have an.
Maybe it would be helpful to send copies to the landowners that are participating too. To get their comments, like CVPS and.
Green Mountain Power, yeah, I can send it, yeah, that's not a bad idea.
Get some folks to walk down, your friends.
We have to talk easement.
Right.
As Simon's Avenue group, we gotta, actually, we've gotta get our little group together to do it, so. Um, who was I gonna give this to?
Bill.
Bill. This is for the select board?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, yes.
Is that it Mary?
It, it is.
Great.
Oh, really? That was easy. Crayons. Colorado.
Alright, thanks Barbara. Kirsten Hathaway, Town Clerk and Treasurer.
Hello.
How are you tonight?
Good.
Great.
We've already knocked some things off my list, so that's good. Um, so just a reminder, we've talked about it already, um, the BCA meeting is at 6:00 on, uh, next Tuesday. We have several abatement requests, um, so it'll be an interesting one. Um, let's see, the, um, tax rate information was in your packets, um, the school rate information should be on your desks, uh, I think Bill gave you that, um, that's the tax rate, yes. So, um, I figured we probably want a finance committee meeting to go over it beforehand, but.
Do that, and probably want a full board if we can, to set the tax rate.
Full board to set the tax rate.
Um, I do have, um, Nemrick coming in on the 31st of July to print the tax bills, so prior to that, I would need the tax rate set.
Okay, so we'll put that on the agenda for next meeting.
Yes. Okay.
So Billy, would you somewhere on your desktop start me a new, uh.
Before you leave, I'll show you.
Crayons, use crayons Josh.
Alright, you'll get crayons in your package, okay? Okay, so we'll hold on to that.
Yep.
For next meeting.
Yep, and then, uh, I think the only other thing I had, um, the Vermont Community Leadership Summit is August 12th in Randolph, um, I talked to Bill, he's not able to go, and I would like to go in his place, if that's possible. It is a free ticket, the town doesn't have to pay for it.
What's it called?
The Vermont Community Leadership Summit.
What does it do?
Um, there's a lot of talk about, um, there's some finance, um, question, like, uh, topics that they talk about on how to finance different, um, community projects, um, and a lot of it is just basically, um, meeting with other towns to discuss, you know, ideas and, and try to come up with fresh, um, community outreach options and things like that, so.
Well, you wanna be the representative for the board, you're saying?
That's what I was asking, yes.
Fine with it Mary, John Paul?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Enjoy.
I will let them know. And I think that was everything, unless you have something else for me?
Anything for Kirsten?
No, I was just gonna ask about setting the tax rate, but you beat me to it.
Okay.
Okay, very good.
Awesome.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Rose Apson, Byron Hathaway, Town Road Commissioner.
Uh, yeah, a few items tonight, um, just wanted to give you an announcement, uh, in regard to the Route 4 paving out here, um, I think it's been mentioned once, I just thought I'd mention it again, um, the state will be, uh, painting, uh, bike lanes on Route 4 from here to West Rutland, as part of the paving project next year.
Bike lanes with four lanes of travel trap?
Four lanes of travel, and bike lanes on each side, painted bike lanes.
Sounds like a perfect compromise.
Yep, um.
I did send you a copy of the letter that I wrote, okay, thanks.
We did, we did get a, uh, uh, response, uh, by applying for that 1111 permit to install a crosswalk out front, that's now gonna become part of that project.
Yeah.
The state will be, uh, installing that crosswalk, it's not something we'll have to do.
Does the paving begun yet on, uh, Route 7?
Uh, they've started on Route 3, Route 3, Route 7 is a, is a one project, and the contractor is working on Route 3's side of it now. In fact, they started with some shim, I think, yesterday, so there'll be, I think it'll be on and off most of the summer here before they get done. But anyways, uh, FEMA, um, we have made contact with FEMA, I've been to the, uh, applicant briefing, um, Bill, both Bill and I have, have submitted things, uploaded stuff to the grant portal, it's a new internet thing now, it seems like every time we do FEMA, we get a little different method of doing things. Um, so I expect within the next two weeks to get a phone call from someone from FEMA, um, and setting up a date and time for a sit-down meeting, and they will be going over all of our stuff, um, so that's kind of the process. Um, our project is small, it shouldn't be a huge deal, um, they'll either say yep or no. We'll either get our payment or we won't. We did get our, our signed documentation, uh, from the state for the, uh, structures grant, which was for engineering, um, for the culvert change on Town Line Road. Do you have a preferred vendor for engineering, do you want that put out to bid?
Probably should bid it. Do we have a preferred engineer?
Mark Youngstrom, right?
It's for water sewer engineering.
How much is the?
I just, you know, it, it makes no difference to me, I can write up specifications, it's a, a 18-month grant, so we have time to do bidding now, get the documents, put the construction out to bid, probably have it done next spring.
Yeah, let's put it out to bid.
Yeah. That's fine. Which reminds me, I think we're supposed to re-up our preferred vendor list every year, have we done it?
No, we did that already.
Do we? Do we? Okay, good.
Think that was done back in March, wasn't it?
Is that a, is that a list Bill, that we could print and hang on the, on the board as well? Please.
Um, in your packet, there was a, uh, a set of specifications and bid document for, uh, upgrading, uh, the larger trailer that we have. You asked me to put that out to bid, is, does everything look alright to you, in which case I will send that out.
It looked fine to me. You know the specifications, which you're looking for, so.
Yeah.
Go for it.
What do you figure that trailer weighs, about 4,000 pounds?
Somewhere around there.
Yep.
Um, in your packet, you also received a letter and drawing from Mr. Cunningham in regards to a drainage ditch around his house, we had talked about this.
Cunningham or Canales?
Uh, Canales, not Cunningham. Cunningham's, Hitzel Terrace, sorry.
Oh, yeah, okay, phew.
Yeah.
Oh, we did that, alright.
Canales, and, uh, so I just didn't know what your thoughts were, um, we had talked about, uh, I know Mary expressed her opinion that she felt we should stay within our right-of-way and bring that drainage down the side of East Pitchard Road, and then back out Countryside Drive, um, that, uh, my, my hesitation there was the fact that we'd have to dig around that elm tree that's in the corner, and that's one of the last surviving elm trees in this whole God figure Rutland area, as far as I know of. Um, it's looking a little sickly this year, um, I, I don't know if it, if, if it doesn't leave out next year, it's certainly a tree that's gonna have to come down, um, at that point, you certainly could stay within your right-of-way and work that way, instead of, instead of.
So what do you wanna do, take a wait and see?
Instead of refurbishing the ditch, um, behind Mr. Canales, down the side of his property. Um, I believe Mr. Broadwell also complained about the, the drainage there and, and that sort of thing, that's what started this whole conversation.
You think we should wait and see on the tree? I don't like going outside our right-of-way for drainage.
If it, if that's, if, if that's still your feeling, um, Mr. Canales's project certainly could be done either dry time of the summer, or, uh, middle of the winter, when it's frozen, and that would minimize any property damages.
Yep.
Other than that.
Why, were you, you thinking about getting in there and scooping it out for him?
Yeah, they'd like to see the water kinda disappear, so in other words, dig a ditch, put a pipe in the bottom, stone it.
Yeah.
And, you know, then the water kinda disappears. A lot of the source of the water is our pipe, that comes down the side of East Pitchard Road, all the way from Russell Drive.
Oh, well, if we're the source of the water, then we ought to take care of the problem.
So, um, it, it's not a huge problem at this point, Mr. Canales is, um, as he stated in his letters, getting older, he's always been out there with his potato hook and, you know, keeping grass and debris and that sort of thing out of the ditch and keeping the water flowing, but, um, but I, I think Marshall was involved with that many, many years ago, you know, one of those, he just does the project, doesn't really say anything to anybody, but.
So we should probably go ahead and mitigate the water problem?
Yeah, or you certainly could wait, and if that tree is a tree that's gotta come down, then, you know, pipe it around.
How about, could we help the, could we, um, ditch his drainage now as a temporary, wait to see on the tree before we do the piping on the ditch?
We could do that, we could just leave it as an open ditch with no pipe or stuff.
Like a temporary fix? Help him, now this is different than Grover Drive, right?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Absolutely, you're, you're not, you're apples and oranges there.
That's what I thought, but I wanted to get your view of that.
Yeah.
Alright, so can we do that? We'll do it, um, temporary, let's wait and see on the tree, and then pick it up next year and see how it.
And then, uh, the Regosta project, he just called me, wanted to know if the Highway Committee was meeting on that, I did bring some information in to you at the last meeting, I don't think you were here.
The costing of it?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I got that.
Okay.
Have we cost...
The only question that I had there was what depth are the, because there are cross conduits, utility conduits that go across at that point, what their depth is and whether they would interfere with, you know, maybe having to put the culvert pipe deeper to get under it, that sort of thing. That was a question that I had. So that would require, you know, a bit of an exploratory before you even started the project.
Yeah.
Whether you want, whether you feel that we need to do that project or not.
Well, we declined the opportunity to do that project. What I'm...
So you want to issue a permit to Mr. Regosta and say, here's the project, this is probably what ought to be done? Have at it?
Well, I think the committee should probably consider that first, yes? Or...
But we did sort of onsite talk about doing it within the road right-of-way and the need for a permit if we did that. If you want, if you think Highway needs to take a closer look at it, we can, but I think we had moved beyond that.
The other question I had was, you know, Mr. Bullock has a well-established paved driveway. Is he gonna be happy with, you know, having that dug up?
That'd be between the two landowners.
Correct.
I'm also interested, has there been any cost estimate to return that green space, that water park to its original?
If you put the 15-inch pipe in, it wouldn't matter what you did to that green space. You could just push the old dirt back in there, grate it up and seed it, and because you're not relying on circulation at that point. You're taking stormwater and moving it in a different location.
But my point is the owner...
If you're gonna rely on it for circulation, then you've got to do something different there, other than just push the dirt back in hole.
Right, and to my point, the landowners made it pretty clear, he's not gonna do the project by himself. And therefore, I...
I think that was his standpoint, yeah.
Yeah, so I think therefore, we should move forward, would have in that waterspace reclaimed, yes. So we'd need an estimate of the cost to present to him.
Okay.
That might even motivate him to do the other project.
Yeah, I was just thinking that.
Well, he talked to me, he said he talked to another area contractor who proposed this digging all of the dirt out down to the ledge and filling it back in with a stone and...
It's not gonna do anything, is it?
Thank you.
Okay. I mean, even, I know that. And I don't know how many 10-minute periods there are in an hour.
Even less capacity.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not, wasn't real comfortable with that either. I would prefer to see, you know, a registered professional engineer dictate what should be done to restore that.
Yep. Is that something you could follow up on for us? Get an estimate?
I can. I could give Mark a call and have him call my editor Bronson Spencer or somebody like that.
Oh, we'll get Bronny. I haven't seen him in years.
It's his subdivision.
Oh, that's right? Yeah, yeah, I forgot that.
He did all of the roadwork and, he did the easement, didn't he drop the easements?
I think he certified the road for us too afterwards, yeah.
Do that all up. I'll give Bronson a call and see what he wants to do there. And then, we've had a request for service down on Seward Road in regards to the Graphic Edge business, which is the former Metro Mail building. They had a real issue last winter with, during one of those heavy rain events where water jumped the road from the south side to the north side. They have a loading dock that is below grade and with a drain and a sump pump, and that pumps, that sump pump pumps water out of there. Of course, it couldn't keep up during that rain event. And so that filled up, it iced over with a lot of ice. Anyways, they've got a business that, from what they're telling me, that wants to come into town, into that end of the building, and supposedly would be bringing 80 jobs. But anyways, it's critical that they have the loading dock. So they would like to, one, have the town install a culvert from an existing catch basin, back up the roadway to another catch basin that would pick up the drainage off of the Foley property. It's a little involved. We haven't had a site visit there.
We have not.
There's a, currently from the upper parking lot at the Foley property, there's a cross culvert that picks up a lot of the water off his parking lot, puts it to the north side of the road where it flows very slowly all the way out and to the railroad tracks and then heads north. That ditch should be dug and refurbished. There's a 10-inch culvert pipe that's supposed to take the drainage, that should be upsized. That would, that would help that. The water jumping the roadway, I think, was a function more of snowbanks and the fact that water, you know, when you've got a snowbank that's frozen in the bottom from those warm storms that we had, it can't get itself back over into the ditch. And it can, I mean, I'll agree with them, it probably did jump the road, run into their parking lot and fill that, and contributed to filling that parking lot. They're gonna do a significant amount of drainage improvements on their side, one of which would be to install an asphalt curb along Seward Road, along their property to help make sure water doesn't come in there. So I hesitate a little bit about accepting responsibility for the water that's coming out of the Foley property. I went down there during one of our heavy storms. Everything was going where it was supposed to be going, and I think last winter was that one-in-10-year event that we had.
It was an extraordinary event, really.
But anyways, it would be helpful, I think, that, because they would like to have the town on this cross culvert, put in some type of a drywall or something they could pump to, to get the water out of there, instead of, because currently they're pumping that stormwater into our sewer system. I haven't pulled the permit. I can do that on my list of things tomorrow, but according to their representative, their Act 250 permit allows them to do that.
A lot of moving pieces, Byron. We need a committee meeting on this.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of moving pieces there. I'm not sure why a 250 permit would allow them to pump stormwater into a sewer system.
Yeah, but it doesn't.
Right. That doesn't make sense.
Unless it was so far...
If they knew about it, they wouldn't be happy with it.
It'd have to be like eons ago.
Yeah, way before.
Schedule a Highway Committee meeting, Mary.
Highway, yeah, we tried to get one in this week.
Tried to get one for today, but that just doesn't happen anymore. So I know I'm gonna get a bunch for tonight's meeting, and I know I'm gonna get a bunch of calls from these people.
Alright.
Tell them it's on our...
They're just pushing.
Yeah, just tell them it's on our radar and we're addressing it.
Yeah. I will do that.
Alright, so we can just...
We did that, we did that.
We could set up a meeting and see what shows up.
There was, the last thing I have is a, I went to a TAC meeting that you appointed me to, the Transportation Actions Council. It's a little subcommittee of the RPC. The meeting was down at the Regional Airport, and we got a nice tour of the Regional Airport and all was having our meeting. I thought the most interesting thing was that there were last year, over 11,000 passengers serviced by Cape Air out of Rutland. Yep. They're doing three flights a day, they got one pilot that flies...
And they just got the renewal of their status.
Starts in the morning, leaves Rutland, goes to Boston and comes back and turns around, goes back to Boston, turns around, comes back again. For less than a hundred bucks, you can fly to Boston in just under an hour and make all kinds of connections. And if you do your flight connections through Cape Air with their affiliates, you don't have to touch your luggage, you don't have to, rates are a lot lower.
What'd you do, buy stock in them?
No, just pass it on, you know. But I was, I was really, really interested because they do have a connecting flight. You fly less than an hour from here to Boston and then grab your connecting flight and in another, a little over an hour, you're in Bar Harbor, Maine.
Ooh.
Yeah.
So when are you and Irene going?
We've been there a couple of different times, and so is JP, and it is a lovely town.
Oh, my God. And they're allowing electric bikes in Acadia Park this year.
And the Acadia Park up there is just something everybody should take the time to go see. I think it's the...
The bridge work alone will keep you...
Isn't it the most visited?
No, that's actually Niagara Falls is the most visited national park.
Park?
Yep.
Niagara is, okay. It's way up on the list there. And it's just an awesome piece of property up there.
More committee meetings.
So there you are.
Very good, Byron.
That was a Rockefeller property, you know.
Question for the Board Chairman.
Oh, I like those.
Go to it.
This is a easy one. Bill spoke to me a while back about procuring a whiteboard for in here instead of the chalkboard. I have one that I got from GMP up at the Highway Garage.
Yes.
That looks just like that. It's got the same wood trim.
Yeah, so it's something I wanted to talk about at our next Building Committee meeting, but I want to...
We're not using it much.
Yeah.
Do you want it taken down and moved here?
It would be my preference we did, because I'm the only one that seems to use that board, and the chalk is a mess. Whiteboard is so much easier, so...
Except the markers always get dry. Have you ever noticed that?
I don't know, mine have been kicking around since 2016.
Chalk never dries out, you notice that?
Right, yeah.
Chalk never dries, what are you talking about?
I'm talking about markers drying out. You get one of those fancy boards, you can't write on it because nobody's got marker with ink.
I donate some markers to the town. I mean, what are we talking here?
That's why it's a question for you.
Yeah, I would prefer that we put up the chalk, the whiteboard, but Mary didn't seem to be overly thrilled with that idea, so...
Okay, then.
But just, you know, negative Nellie here. So whatever, you could always put it on it.
You're not spending any money. I got it for free from GMP.
He won't let me.
Chalk is, chalk is a little outdated as well. You don't see many chalkboards anymore. Whiteboards, smart boards at the town school, that'll be next.
The disposable generation, right?
I'm not saying, I'm just saying.
Okay, anyways, I have one.
Thank you.
If you want it, let me know. We'll figure out some time to make this work.
I think we'd like it.
Okay.
Be a safe thing to do.
That would be the editorial, huh?
Run.
Okay.
Thank you, Byron.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay.
Well, looks like I prevailed again on time.
Who's next?
Nice.
Chris Clark, Fire Chief.
Knocked Josh right off the bicycle.
All right, your two Assistant Chiefs joining you? You alright? I did, I did, this weekend at the town celebration, I did actually, I hope the Board's okay with that, I have re-titled them once again. They were Deputy Chiefs a month ago, two Assistant Chiefs now, they're Battalion Chiefs.
Battalion, I like battalion.
Oh, geez, okay.
We have two battalions in town, right?
Battalion now.
We have Center and McKinley.
Yeah.
You're the Chief Engineer.
We do.
How are you, Chief?
I'm doing great. How are you?
Great.
I don't have much tonight. First, I wanted to thank Byron and the road crew for getting our dirt for us. Flowers are planted and it looks good.
Marty and his wife, they did a nice job.
Very nice job.
Marty's a master gardener, right?
It took this board 18 months, so we got no response. It took Sharon Russell one phone call and they were done the next day.
It's scary, huh?
We don't really know what she said to those folks.
I don't think we want to.
Something about an Italian grandmother is all I caught.
We're trying to get a sink installed in the apparatus bay. We already owned the sink. It was kind of something that was missed when we built the building, but Bill Lowson, while he was here, came down and took a look. And to put a sink in and to fix our air conditioner that's leaking down the wall, it was gonna be $1,345. Now, is that something we can take out of that station bond, or do you want me to take it out of my budget?
Well, it wouldn't have to come out of your budget. Wouldn't it come out of the capital? Don't we have a depreciation fund for the department?
Is that for equipment, though?
Oh, right, right, right.
I would take it from the bond money.
How much is left in the bond?
About $70,000 left, right, Chris?
Somewhere around there, yeah.
So it doesn't hit your budget. We have to pay it back eventually, but it doesn't affect your, what you've planned for the next fiscal year, so.
Take it out of there.
Yep.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by John, seconded by Mary, to take out of the bond. How much, Chris? $1,300?
$45.
$45 to install an apparatus-based sink and fix the leaking AC unit. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Just one other thing, I kind of want to get the new Station Committee rolling, so I was wondering if Tuesday, July 30th was a good day for at least you three.
That wouldn't work for me.
No?
No. Taking some time off.
You want to be there? Do you want me scheduled, or?
Yeah, no, I want to be there, but I don't want to object if you want to go forward. I'll just...
Do another day.
I'll just join.
Do you, a couple of questions. Did you have a location picked? Did you want to do it here? Did you want to do it at the firehouse?
I figured Center Rutland.
Center Rutland?
Yeah.
Yep. Up to you, of course. You know you're scheduled.
Are you going away the week before?
We could, well, I was gonna say, we have a Select Board meeting the 23rd, but we could do, you know, if everyone can make it, like a 4:30 meeting or something like that, and then come up here for the Select Board meeting.
Ooh, that.
4:30 on the 23rd?
Sure.
Is that all right with you, Chief?
That's fine with me.
Chris, what about having it over at McKinley, so we can actually walk where we want to...
I think that'd be a good idea, actually. I did walk the pins with Joey.
Or another time.
He stopped by, I was there, and we went out. It's a weird layout, so yeah, it's probably a good idea.
So have we moved the building so that the roadway's gonna go to the right, or is the roadway still on the left between the well and the building?
Well, the goal was to move it to the right and trade land with Mrs. Baird.
Right.
I'm not sure how far Joey got with that.
Okay.
He was still talking to her, I think.
Yep. Okay.
Hopefully can, so we can move the building to the left a little bit.
Exactly.
All over the bank.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
And I wanted that Finance Committee meeting before the BCA meeting next week, Bill. Yeah, on the, on the 16th at 5 o'clock. So, Chris?
Oh, the 23rd, 4:30 at McKinley Station?
23rd, 4:30 at McKinley Station, right. And that's a committee meeting that we could have Bill warn, because you're gonna have multiple Select Board members.
Correct. Yep. You'll take care of that, Bill?
At McKinley. Everyone can, everyone can take a peek at what we're working with, right? So, and this will be a kickoff meeting, and that'll be good.
Alright.
Nice job getting that organized.
That's all I got.
Okay.
Alright, Chris, thanks. Anything? Mike? Dell? Good? Appreciate you guys being here. Yeah, Doom, it's Town Police Chief.
I'd like to introduce Officer, Officer Brendan Riley.
Brendan, how are you?
I'm well, how are you?
Great.
He's our 2015 five-year plan?
Yes.
Yes. You're early by a year.
Yeah.
I thought, I thought it would have been a nice opportunity for him to keep, we should have kept that cruiser for him to drive, but...
I don't care. It bothered me at all.
You could paint, you know, do your own decorations.
Sure, I'll mark it up, I don't mind.
Well, welcome to the town. You've been on, what, about a week now?
About a week.
Yep. Initial thoughts?
Everything is good.
Good.
Very good.
We like to hear that.
It's good to be here.
Thanks for coming up to Townwide Celebration. It was good to see you up there.
It was fun, other than how warm it was, but...
And he participated with fireworks as well.
Very good.
So, yeah. Chief, what do you got for us?
We got calls for service at 26, last two-week period. I don't see any fireworks complaints here.
Yeah, I was wondering, would they show up here? Yeah, they would.
They would. They should. I don't think, none of them are, even the citizens assist, I don't think they're anything to do with fireworks.
How about the van situation on the south end of town we've talked about? Has that been handled?
Yes.
Pop John drive.
Today, I took and issued a letter to that business. They accepted it. And they want to know about the trucks that were parked in there. And I said that the Slide Board was working on signage, so that if a trailer is dropped there, then we would have to call the appropriate authority to, or appropriate company to tow that trailer out there, but it has to be signed before we can do that.
And so just to recap, the Board had decided or discussed that if a tractor-trailer was there with the driver, it was okay.
Right.
But not leaving your trailer was not okay.
Right.
And Byron, did we ask you to work on some signs for us for that? Okay. Is that something, John, you can come up with?
Yeah, I can get, I mean, yeah, I can get some truck language out of the federal regulations for standing only. So that was taken care of. And then, what else did I do? Yeah, I emailed Mary, I don't know if you want me to talk about this, about the, that position we were talking about. I don't know if you read it or not.
Not yet.
Has to do with, well, the problem running into with, like, with Officer Riley's stuff, his bulletproof vests, his holster, we can't get anything. It's a three or four-month wait because apparently there's this government contracts. They've taken up everything. We can't get, we can't get bulletproof vests or our holsters. There's a three to four-month wait on the equipment right now.
So where did we get the stuff you're wearing now?
We, yeah, this is his. He bought it. So that's what we're doing right now. So we're in this waiting game.
We're at almost ten weeks on body armor right now.
Right.
And looking at probably, I talked to Peros today, probably another week at best time before it's here.
So with that in mind, our SRO is going to retire in the first week of December. And I would like.
He been cleared?
What's that?
He been cleared to retire?
No, he's still off. So I'd like to, we'd like to advertise for the next position, for the SRO, for, to whoever's going to, would apply for it. And that would give us some, a lead time to put a committee together, to do the interviews, and then time to let ask the person they want to work for us. And then if they see yes, then we can measure them up and get our gear placed in a workplace so we can have it ready. I would like whoever fills SRO shoes, I'd like to have them there a month in advance to be at the school with a current SRO to see how things, how he does things, and then how they can improve it as time goes on.
Think you need a month? How many hours do you ride around to get trained?
It's, well, depending on the agency. Like, I know state police, even if you're a precinct, it's forty shifts. If you go to Colchester, it's fifty-five shifts, even if you've been a cop for ten years. I think by the time I'm all said and done, if all goes well, with uh.
Be eighty hours.
Yeah, about eighty so hours with Ted and I in a car together. So that's two weeks.
It's not the, when I started, you rode with someone for a day or a week and they threw me the keys and said, you're a police officer.
Have fun.
Just had to figure it out. Yeah, have fun. Try not to get yourself into much trouble. So we try. Things have changed. Did pretty well. I did okay. But, yeah. So that's, that's why I like, it'd be nice to have that transition.
Well, if that's what your recommendation is, chief, I don't see why we wouldn't.
It is.
Proceed.
Your thoughts, Mary?
It's fine.
Okay. We will put the, Ted's going to put out the memo, we'll put it in the paper, we'll put it on the webpage for the academy and the town webpage. And we'll go from there, see what happens. And I'll keep my guys informed when we're going to do the next interviews, that, how that lines up. The other thing, I think that's it.
We've, once Officer Riley's out of, you know, the orientation period, we've worked out a schedule where we'll have the seven-day coverage that we.
Yes.
We're looking for.
And we're looking to get some night coverage, too, evenings.
Great. That'll, that'll be a big win for the townspeople.
Yes.
And did we at the?
The, the speed carts. Did we do that last meeting?
It's on our.
We did. And there was a question of where we were going to get the money.
Oh, right, right, right.
I thought we reached all of that.
No, you were talking, I think you talked about the, Byron brought up the fact that the, the, help me out with that fund. What do we call it? For the, we can, depreciation fund for the, we can't take it out of there because it's a new item, so therefore we can't purchase it with depreciation.
So then the question was, do we go to the town's capital improvement fund? Was that?
Well, it's a capital improvement.
Well, it is that, but so we were just sort of, I know, we were sort of stuck about where, where to take the money from.
How much is it? Four grand?
No, seventy-five hundred.
Yeah, that's for two?
No, one.
For one.
Well, wait a minute. We're past July first. We were going to take the money, we were going to get two. One out of this current money from the tax roll and we had.
No, no, that's, you're talking about the depreciation fund.
No. We wanted to get two carts. I thought we were going to do one through the, the, we can't do that. We can't take the money from the building. And we were going to do the other out of this new quarter of a percent money that was coming in after July first. I thought we were going to get two.
Dell?
No.
What quarter percent money are you talking about?
The one that.
You're twenty-six grand.
You're twenty-six grand that comes in on an annual basis for equipment from the tax.
That's, that's the depreciation fund.
No, it's not.
It's not?
No. That's twenty-six grand that goes into an equipment fund for you.
Equipment depreciation fund?
Yes.
It's both.
I thought it was an equipment fund. It was supposed to be for the purchase of equipment.
The wording that's in my head is, but all of the funds, the highway fund, the rec fund, the fire fund, we're all equipment depreciation funds.
So where else do we have money we can pull from? What were you saying?
The town's capital. And we've got a big surplus going into it this year.
No, necessarily.
I thought it was, mentioned that there was some, there was additional one percent options.
There was additional one percent option money that came in from last, there was, there was more than we had budgeted, but it was an option.
Right, a hundred and eighty.
Right. That was last fiscal year.
Right.
So, and then according to our auditors, the amount that we have that's carryover should first go to.
Right.
The one point five million, which we're down to about one point two right now.
Right.
We don't have to use all of it, though.
No, and we're only talking about seventy-five hundred. Yeah, see, they're all listed, well.
I think it's real important we peel that money out of somewhere to get this cart up and running.
I agree. I really want to get it going. They, they are all listed, at least on our tax report, as depreciation funds.
We also have that hundred and sixty thousand we took in from the solar deal.
Where's the forestry one?
That was for Northwood.
Put that in a separate account to improve the trail system in rec.
The, the police equipment depreciation fund we can use to purchase a new car because we are replacing what we currently have.
Oh, we're also replacing the radio unit that was in that car. We're just doing it by a cart. Still has four wheels on it.
Bigger.
No, huh? You're not going to let me get away with that?
I don't know. You can make the motion and see if you get enough. We do want to get it. I mean, there's a question. We do have to get it.
We just have to sort out where we're getting the money from.
But.
The other thing that would need to be discussed is the car, how we're going to do that. Typically, the way depreciation funds are funded is that for each tax installment, one-third of the amount that was allocated for that depreciation fund goes into the depreciation fund. Because it's a smaller amount, it's possible that you could override that and have all of it go in in the first tax installment.
Oh, gotcha.
But I don't know how the other department has a feel about that.
We won't tell them.
Well, with all due respect, with all due respect to the other department has, we, we don't have enough money right now to buy a car, a, a new police car.
Right.
So we may have to make a radical decision here to do so.
And that's why I'm saying what I'm saying.
Why don't we take it up in the finance committee? Figure it out there. Or if you don't want to, you want to do it now. I, I really want to get the cart.
Let's get this thing over with.
Fine.
Roll it tonight.
All we need is a.
So where can we get the money from again, Kirsten?
So for the car, once the September tenth taxes come in, if you wanted to, I could do the full amount for the waste depreciation this time and put it into the first, through the first installment.
Are you talking the cruiser?
The cruiser, yeah.
No, we're not, we're not talking about that. We're talking about the speed.
We're talking about where we can get money to buy the speed cart.
Right.
We take it from the money, the cash to.
Very unusual situation, Kirsten. I'm looking to spend money.
We could, we could take it from the cash to open.
Yes.
And hope that there's an excess at the end of the year from the police, from the police budget.
I say we either do it out of the depreciation fund or we do it out of the.
We are, we are getting twenty-five hundred dollars for a car outside.
That's true.
Yeah, but I think you wanted to put that into an overtime fund for the officers, didn't you?
Okay.
Um, I like the depreciation fund. I think you're, I think we'd be all right with it.
Are we still going to have enough for a cruiser?
Well, we're leasing or we're not buying the cruiser outright. We're doing a three-year program, right?
Right, the three-year.
All right, all right, okay.
We got a little over nine thousand.
All right. Are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by John Paul, seconded by Mary to take roughly seventy-five hundred dollars out of the police department's depreciation, equipment depreciation fund to buy two of the speed carts.
No, one.
One.
Sorry, one of the speed carts.
Can I just interject?
Yeah.
Would that be happening in September or is that going to happen prior to September when the money goes into?
We want it right away. So.
As soon as we can, we'd like to do it.
So what I'm going to need to do, to do this then, I'm just walking through it.
Yeah.
Is that I would pay for it out of the one percent options and that would be less of what we put in after we receive the taxes.
Correct.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So just, just another question about the cart. When we had originally talked about carts, weren't they around like thirty-seven hundred dollars?
Never.
Those are the post-mounted ones.
Yeah.
Once you mount them on the post.
Yeah, we didn't want.
Plus, we, plus the one we need, we need to be able to do the actual count so that we can target where the problem areas are. That's the benefit of the cart.
I'm all for it. I just thought I remembered a price of thirty-seven hundred dollars or something.
That was on the post.
Thinking about one of your products.
Okay. All right. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice to meet you. Good luck, all right? Stay safe. Uh, John Paul, town health officer.
Uh, nothing current to report.
Committee meeting updates, recreation, anything to discuss?
I have one sitting there.
Progress of projects, roof extension, John, any update from Valenti on that?
It's looking like an August start date.
Mary just gave us something on the pocket park. The new utility fire truck that's ordered. Chris, when do we think we're getting that?
Uh, no word yet.
Okay. Do we feel tennis, basketball court parking, the courts have been paved, right?